It is 2:03 and the Electric Utility Board is going to call a special meeting to order. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, no sir.
I'm right agenda here. Technical Review Committee of the Electric Utility Board meeting to order. No one signed up for public comment. Brings us to item three and I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. McCullough. It's a presentation from you guys to go through A through K here. There's a handout obviously that's going to pop up on our screen. And would you like us to take questions during, throughout, wait till the end?
Well, I think the goal here is try to answer as many of your questions as we can. So we've got multiple presenters again like we had previously. And I would suggest that for this meeting, supposed to be a little more informal, but it's still pretty formal with y'all sitting on the dice, ask questions as we go along. That's probably the best way to proceed.
Is that an option to take our ties off or?
Mr. Chairman, that is entirely your call.
Yeah, shoes off. Now, go ahead.
Okay, so again, this, the goal of this presentation is to answer additional questions, have some additional dialogue about this important decision that's facing the governing bodies. And so we will have, and the goal here is to try to answer questions that y'all have already asked to the extent of our, that we can, and get follow-up questions from y'all if you have some, and we'll try to answer them on the fly. So most of this presentation is designed to, as follow-up to questions that have been asked previously, so feel free to stop us during the presentation and we'll try to respond. So Ms. Wood will be talking first, and this is mainly about the polar option technology. There were some questions about the estimate, why it was so much, why there was an extension of time required for the provider of last resort options, so she will address those. Mr. Jimenez is going to provide some information about the TDU charges and comparison with other TDUs charges, and then also some additional financial implications that are necessary if, or that come into play if we, if y'all decide that you want LPNL to be the provider of last resort. We've talked about that some already, but there's some additional thoughts that he's going to share with you. Ms. Smith will talk about Public Utility Commission, polar selection procedures and schedule, not that, not that the board and the council have to follow that policy, but it's the only example that we've got to follow right now is what, what is it that the PUC does. So we'll share that information with you and give you, give you some insight into what the Public Utility Commission does. Mr. Rose will talk about our communications plan, and then I will talk some more about retail electric providers, rates and plans, and just some ideas about how, how one should go about selecting a retail electric provider, and give you an update on the regulatory process. And then the last but not least, talk about a proposed schedule for moving forward with this process to bring the matter to a vote if, if the board and council are ready to act by, by the time that we're showing here. If not, then we'll, we'll follow whatever schedule y'all decide that you want us to follow. So I think at this point, Ms. Wood.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Based on some feedback from the last meeting, I have included some acronyms for everybody's reference, just in case. I'm sure we're familiar with all of them, but again, you know, CR, REP, the Retail Electric Provider, the EZID is one of those, it's ERCOT's main point of service for identification. The EDI Gateway, this is the Secure Communication Platform, MTM, the Market Transaction Manager, OFSC, that's our Work Order Management System, Polar, Provider of Last Resort, and then So really, my main goal today is to discuss the setting up of the three business units should we move forward as a polar. First will be City of Lubbock Utilities, and that will be the remaining City of Lubbock Utility Services, water, storm water, wastewater, solid waste, et cetera. LPNL as a TDSP, and then the third business unit will be LPNL as a polar entity. So I switched it up a little bit on how we're showing the integration pieces. This is a current integration with what we have today. We've got an integration with our CUBRA Bill Print, our online vendors, we've got payments coming in and going out, going through, we've got an interface with the solid waste, the Scale House, and we've also got an interface with the City of Lubbock GIS. So as a TDSP, this is what we're looking at. It's going to sit on top of the CIS platform, and it's going to be separated by CIS Division. So as we look forward to LPNL as a TDSP, we're going to need to modify a couple things in the CIS Division One. Mainly is going to be removing the electric services and transferring them all over to the TDSP side of CIS Division Two. There'll be a couple other minor modifications to interfaces for the IVR and our online utility credit risk interface, but those are very minor in comparison to the electric services moving around. Now, when it comes to Division Two, we're going to have to add on some new interfaces. These new interfaces are going to be specific to the electric portion as the TDSP. We'll need to make sure that we've got the field service talking correctly to that CIS Division. We need to make sure that the meter reads are coming into that division. We'll also need to make sure that the outage management is talking to the correct division. And then most importantly, the EDI Gateway, which is going to communicate with ERCOT and the retailers, as well as the MTM configuration. So should we go polar, this is what it's going to look like. Again, the CIS Division Three will be the polar, and it'll sit on top of the CIS platform. So in addition to the modification that we have to do with CIS Division One, and the addition of the integrations and interfaces in CIS Division Two, we now have a whole new set of integrations and configurations for CIS Division Three that we wouldn't have had to do previously. So one of the questions we talked about last time, or one of the questions that was asked last time was, well, you know, why does this cost so much? We're looking at approximately a $33 million project should we move forward with the polar option, and that's from just the software side of things. So where do we get that money? Where do we, where does that all come down to, really? The breakdown, for example, for the TMG Consulting Services. We have them for project and change management, a solution architect, integration services, business processes, testing and training, all for the CIS Division Two, which is the TDSP. We would need to have additional project management, additional change management, specifically additional business process management for the CIS Division Three for the polar, as all those would be different than the ones that we were setting up as the TDSP. From an Oracle standpoint, as the TDSP, we're looking at eight weeks of configuration workshops. We would need another eight weeks of configuration workshops to set up the polar side of things, an additional 18 transaction sets. And just so y'all know, the transaction sets are move in, move out, switch, switch holds, any of those transactions back and forth from the retailer through ERCOT to, back to us as the TDSP. We'll have 11 new integrations. We need two additional weeks of reporting workshops, environment preparation. And then one of the things that is a fairly big part of the project is the electric exit and entrance strategy. So we really need to make sure that we provide clean data from our current CIS Division to the new TDSP Division. So in addition to that, we're also going to need to provide an electric transfer strategy, allowing those customers that are in the polar to switch back and forth to retail reps as they choose. Additionally, we'll need to create and monitor 175 new batch processes to go along with the polar CIS Division. So before I go into organizational changes, are there any questions about just the technology side?
Stafford has a question.
Just to make sure I understand, if we do the polar option or that, add that third division, that's an additional $12 million?
Correct. That's, that's the estimate right now.
Okay, that's the estimate right now. And then you're also, not only talking dollars, you're also talking efforts as well as time. So it's time and money and effort.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jamie, can you back up just a little bit to the slide on the polar required integration and configuration?
This one?
Walk me through one more time the uniqueness of the Division Three versus Division Two. Is it just the electric service?
It, it is. It's the separation of the electric services from a TDSP versus the electric services as a polar provider. So for example, as the TDSP, all we would need to do with our, with our bill print is stop sending the electric to our bill print. However, as the polar, we'd need to be able to stop sending the electric to the bill print, but then also be able to start it back up again, should they be a customer as a, a polar customer. Same thing with the IVR. When customers are calling in, they've got to call in specifically to the groups that are assigned to them. So if they're calling in for an outage, we need to make sure that they're going to go to the TDSP CIS Division Two, and the association of the customers along that side. They're associated with the EZID. Where if they're calling in for just generic customer service, they're going to call in on the polar line and get the polar queue, and they'll, to speak to customer service reps about their electricity. When it comes to the MTM configuration, again, the talking back and forth, it's not, the TDSP would be speaking not only to ERCOT, but then it's also got to, it also has to be able to communicate back and forth with the polar as well.
I guess I'm still not getting something. It almost sounds like we have a duplicate Division Two and Division Three, and the only difference is the electric service, which I'm trying to understand, why can't you distinguish electric service in Division Two and handle even those transactions when payments come in, because you're, you're going to post them based upon your algorithm of some sort? I'm still not, I guess I'm not getting it yet.
It's really about just the separation of the business units, keeping the money separate, keeping the information separate. The, it's basically the separation point, where if we mix them all together in the TDSP, I think that that's where we run into, we run into some trouble. We'd have to duplicate, we'd have to have duplicate of everything on the TDSP side. So it really, it's about keeping them separate.
But they're, they're together now.
They are together now.
You bill for five utilities now? Okay, I'm, I'm still not getting it.
Mr. Chairman?
Barry Webber, Senator.
Maybe, so the way I understand this, in effect, we're pulling the electric data out of the, out of our, which is now all in the one utility deal. That's got to go through the EDI Gateway in order for us to participate in the market, right? So that's the clearinghouse of data, so to speak.
Correct.
Then in order for us to be a polar, we in effect have to get it back for those who choose, who don't choose someone else. That has to, so it's basically creating another loop or another, in order to maintain the integrity of the data. So, and if they shift from us to someone else in that operation, that, that cuts us out of that loop, and that information stays in the clearinghouse, so to speak.
Correct.
That's kind of how I understand it, Solomon. Now, I don't, I know what you're getting at with the, the maintenance of the data. Seems like it would be fairly straightforward, but the, the opt-in portion means that objective data stream has to go somewhere else in order for the market to work, rather than, rather than us be told this person's going to some other rep, and then we click it over here. It's got to go through the EDI Gateway first. Is that, is that, is that the best way to explain that, or is that, is that a way to explain?
So Pam Shaw from Principal is here as well, and she has experience. So I don't know if maybe you could help expand on the three separate businesses.
Come on down, Pam. Got to have you on the recording.
Stay back there.
Yeah. Price is right.
I want to back up just a little bit, because I think what maybe I'm hearing is, why do we have to separate them? And part of retail competition is people to choose their energy.
Let me clarify, clarify for a minute. It's not really why we have to separate them, it's how we're separating them, because we're going from Division One to Division Two to Division Three. And my question basically is, why do we have to have Division Three?
Part of the retail competition is pulling out the energy piece for the retail providers to pay, obtain power for the customers and take care of that piece, so they can choose who they want on the retail side. Lubbock Power and Light would remain the TDSP side, and we would have wires charges. So the separation of the wire charges and the retail charges for the power cost are in two different systems. Those costs are tracked separately, and they can be different rates. There will be wire charges rates for the cost of the wires, the meters, and then whatever the cost of power is, and as a polar, LPNL would also have a cost of power. So essentially, the Division Three is setting yourself up as a retail provider. You're going to have different rates in that system than you do in Division Two.
So why can't you use Division One? That's where the data was originally stored.
Because that system right now is not set up to be EDI transactions. It's not in the MTM system. You would have to have electronic transactions transmitting that data, and your Division One is not set up like that right now. That's happening in Division Two.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, so if I may make an observation, if we don't opt in at all, then everything stays just like it is with Division One?
It'll, it would look like that.
If we don't opt in?
Oh, if we don't opt in at all?
If we don't, if Lubbock is not the polar, you only have Division One and Division Two, correct?
Correct. But if we don't opt in at all, yes, correct. You're, yes, I'm sorry. Nothing changes.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bowman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I have a question from another angle. If another entity becomes the polar, would they be subjected to the same expenses that we're talking about here? And how would that affect what you're talking, the organizations are talking about? And if it, if they were faced with that amount of expense, why would anyone do it?
You asking if they will be charged the 12 million?
Yeah, well, they, they're going to have to have the same kind of access to the data that we're talking about here, and, but it would be thrown on someone else, and why would they? Why would they have an expense of 12 million or whatever it comes to? I don't quite understand how we can depend on someone else to be the polar.
Just from my opinion, I don't think that other polars would necessarily have the additional 12 million on top of what, that's their normal business. So they're already set up to do all of the things that we would have to add on.
Wouldn't they have to have access to our data?
They would. They would have access to our data through the EDI Gateway and through ERCOT. So they would already have that communication channel set up with ERCOT through their own
Okay. Well, it's just a thought. I just, I don't see the relationship between our being a polar and someone else being, and throwing whatever portion of our city is onto someone else.
Just an observation, there are entities out there that have already gone through PUC and are polars, and have been doing that for two decades. So they probably already have that business model, so all they would need from us is the wires and transmission type bill to factor in to theirs. So you have people in the state of Texas that already are doing polar and have been doing it for a very long time. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if, if I understand correctly, I'm sorry, Mr. Bowman, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead. I was just a little curious about the interaction between us and some other entity.
Well, so like, my understanding is, is that the data basically goes through, goes to the clearinghouse, which is the EDI Gateway. And then the polar, which the most likely polars are ones who already have millions of meters that they're serving, whereas we're talking about maybe here, let's say 50,000 meters. So we're not talking about a huge jump for somebody who's already handling millions of customers and getting that data through the EDI Gateway. So yeah, I don't, I don't think that's going to be a stretch. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir. Yes, and they'll be able to spread, essentially, they'll be spreading their cost out to their millions of customers versus just the 50,000 or so that we would have.
And for the same reason, whatever their cost of energy is in the, let's call it the swimming pool of ERCOT's power generation, whatever their cost is, we're taking out a thimble in comparison to the rest of the state.
Yes, definitely.
Can I take a different approach? If I am a customer, let's say John Doe, and I want to pay my wastewater, my solid waste, how would I do that based upon this model?
Would you be a polar customer, I guess?
No, I'm just talking about storm water.
Okay. You would get a bill just as you do today.
Okay.
So similar to those that are in Southwest Lubbock, that are in the spec territory, they get a bill for water, wastewater, solid waste, and storm water.
Okay, and if I want to pay online, same as I do today?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so if we are a polar entity, how would I pay my bill?
You would have a separate bill?
Separate bill for the electric?
Just for the electric, yes.
From the water and the rest, okay.
And then it would go, you would have a separate online portal, you would have a separate phone number, you would have separated everything.
You'll have a separate login if you picked XYZ Electric to do that, so you would have two, you're going to have a City of Utilities still with the water sewage, et cetera, and you're going to have your electric bill, whether that's the polar, the City of Lubbock, the polar's XYZ, or the polar's whoever else or whoever you choose to provide your electric. You're going to have two new logins.
So I shared some of the same questions that the board has raised here about why so much to, to add the polar services, LPNL polar services. And what finally, finally dawned on me is that if you look at the option without LPNL being the polar, which is on the screen now, we're only sending bills to the retail electric providers. We're not, we're not sending electric bills to 170,000 customers like we are today. We're sending 50 or 60 bills out to the retail electric providers, including one to whoever, whoever is the polar. The polar will look just like a retail electric provider if LPNL is not the polar. So when you add that polar service back in, we've got, we've got to start having the ability to bill electric charges to the retail customers like we are today, only it would be a separate bill. And those polar customers need the ability to go back and forth, because they don't, they won't want to stay on the polar forever. They may want to choose a retail electric provider that has a more attractive rate or more attractive options to them. So they need that ability to go back and forth between LPNL polar and somebody else. And so that, that's what finally, the light bulb went off in my head as to why it's so expensive and cost, you know, extends the schedule to add that polar option back in is because it's much more complex to be able to start sending bills again, but also to have the flexibility to go back and forth between polar and non-polar retail electric Because I had the same question, why can't we just, why can't we just bill them the way we are today, you know, add it on to the other services bill, and you, you wouldn't have the flexibility for them to go back and forth. But, and you wouldn't also, you would also not have the ability to go communicate with ERCOT, which you need to do with this, with this system. If you join the retail market, we've got to be able to transfer that information back and forth to, through the gateway to ERCOT, who is the clearinghouse for all of these
So staffing. We actually refined our staffing when it came to the TDSP only, and right now, we've got 131 currently in our customer service department. We would be looking at six, and essentially what we'd do is we would take our current staff and split them out into two separate groups. The TDSP group, that would be a specialized market staff, and then the COLU group, which would handle all the other city utilities. We would, in that, it would be a total of nine new employees that we would need to add, and most of that's going to come from the specific market operations team. So now if we look at, from a polar option, we're still going to start with the same 131 employees, 60 for the TDSP, 80 for City of Lubbock Utilities, and then 45 specific to polar. So how that was broken down, just to give y'all the thought process when Pam, Michelle, and I spoke about staffing, you know, we really thought about, what are the calls that we get today? Who are, what are the calls for? What services are they for? When it comes to the dispatch group, the overnight dispatch group, where if we were just the TDSP, we would be able to staff with nine and six, but we would need another three in order to be able to staff dispatch to handle any of the polar calls. And again, this just goes back to separation. When it comes to the customer service call center, we were looking at 30 for all the other utilities, and then 16 added back on for electric specifically. Schedule-wise, again, if we start and initiate the contracts in the first quarter of next year, we were, we're looking at customers active in retail competition in the fourth quarter of 2023. If we move towards being a polar, we've got, we've got some additional tasks that need to happen, including amending the MTM and the EDI Gateway contract, as well as defining new market processes and procedures and all that goes along with that. So we're looking at customers active in retail competition in quarter two of 2024. So we're looking at customers active in retail competition in quarter two of 2024. And that is the end of my presentation. If y'all have any other questions about that. Does. Hand it over to Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shami.
Afternoon again. Um, so, so my section kinda deals with the transmission distribution utility charges and, um, also wanted to give you all some financial implications of us being the polar. Um, there's a lot of things that, you know, we still need to think about, but the, these are some current items that, that, you know, can, can be, um, financially implicated to our budget. So first of all, I wanted to start, you know, I know Mr. Taylor asked, uh, at the last meeting, you know, he wanted to know our transmission distribution, distribution utility charges, which we call TDUs. Um, again, these, these TDU or delivery charges are what your local company or your local utility such as us, charges for the customer for maintaining our electricity poles, wires, meters, storm restoration and other charges as well. So, so really you, you gotta think about it that this TDU charge will pretty much cover our budget annually going forward, you know. So, you know, if, if we do let to get out of the purchase power business, you know, we still have O and M expenses, you know, we still have to maintain the power lines, we still have capital that we gotta pay for. Um, so for, so our rate, you know, th- this is, this is the best estimate that we have right now, you know, unless we do a full cost of rate study, which, uh, our, our, um, consultant is really, is starting to work on right now. But this is the, the best number that we came up for right now. So it's 4.57 cents per KWH. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to put on there the big players, some of the big players in the market. You can see Encore is 4.15 cents, um, CenterPoint is 4.639 cents, um, and, um, AEP, uh, Texas North is 4.109 cents. So, so we're pretty much right in the middle of all these, you know, all these, um, big, uh, companies, you know. So, so tha- that is the TDU rate that we have right now. And again, that will cover all our expenses, um, our O and M, you know, maintenance on the lines, uh, supplies and, and everything it takes to run the utility. So tha- that is the number we have right now. Like I said, it can shift residential, commercial. This is the average aggr- aggregate number we have right now. But, you know, until we really dive in depth on the load and, and all, uh, break them out per rate class, th- this is the best estimate that we have right now.
Just one question. The slide shows $4.57 per kilowatt hour, but you said, you stated it's 4.57 cents per kilowatt.
Yes, and I didn't put the cents on there. So it should be 4.57 cents. So if you can see, you know, so yeah. That's, and I apologize for that. I should've put the cents on there. So, and, and it's really .0457 cents, but I wanted to compare it to the way, you know, the, 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 um, PUC puts it out there. So tha- that's the reason it's at 4 point, and I should've put the cents. I apologize for that.
It's, it's all right. The handout has, yeah, the handout has the dollar sign with the decimals, uh, on that particular deal. So I guess you, you, you must've changed the slide at the last minute.
Yes, yes. I, I changed it to, cause I wanted, at the last minute, I wanted to compare, you know, it's gonna look different. If they, if they have it at 4.15 and ours is at the cents. I apologize for that. Sorry. Good catch. Didn't wanna scare y'all that our rate was 100 times more than theirs. So, but yeah, so tha- that is correct. So. Any questions on that? And so, uh, the other slide I had was the, uh, you know, I wanted to give y'all some financial implications of, you know, us being the polar. Um, you know, all we do is, you know, we, we present y'all the information that we have currently. Um, and one of the biggest risks I really think going forward is our purchase power risk. Um, you know, forecasting will be a real challenge, you know, the, the polar, we, we, we won't know how to really hedge any of our position, you know, given, you know, especially entering into ERCOT if we are the polar. Uh, we, we wouldn't know what percentage stays on, what percentage gets, um, their own rep. And, uh, so I think that'll be, you know, tha- that'll be real uncertainty for us, you know, and, uh, and that could re- really affect us, you know, and having to purchase real-time purchases all, all the time, you know. So I really think that that's a real big risk to the utility, you know, being, uh, being the polar, uh, it's, you know, anybody can jump and move from the polar at any time. So you're really not gonna know how much of low consumption you're actually gonna need for your own, your own customers if we do become the polar on that. Um, and also, like I said, pricing volatility, you know, we, we have to go with the market, you know. If we see that our load i- is really high from one month to the next, we're gonna pay that immediate price on nat- given natural gas, you know. Um, if it's the bad weather conditions, you're gonna pay a premium for, you know, winter events or anything like that. So, so it is a bis- big risk and we don't wanna overper- purchase and not have to use all that energy and then sell it back to the market for a loss. So i- it will be a real, i- it'll be a real task trying to hedge for, for that. Um, and again, the price per KWH can be elevated due to fixed costs. You know, we have an energy management team, which we probably will continue to use it. And so they have base charges for their services, you know. So the less customers you have, the more costs you're gonna split among the remaining customers, you know, right now. So say for example, 100,000 is distributed by 108,000 customers. If they still charges that, you know, they're, they're still doing the work no matter how much energy we purchase out there in the market. So if you still had the $100,000 cost, it may be split between 20,000 customers now. And so that cost has to be passed on to the customer. All this is just gonna be, just like we do now, be a pass-through cost. Whatever we pay for energy is gonna be passed on to the customers. And so, you know, that, that TDU charge, you know, as you were talking, um, Mr. Solomon about that, you know, so there, there is gonna be two different levels of that. They'll, they'll still have their transmission distribution wires charged. And on top of that, we would charge them the energy costs for energy and demand that we're paying buying out in the market for that. So if we, if they do, the customer does remain the polar, they'll have to pay that TDU charge. And on top of that, they'll pay for the energy and demand that they, that they use as well.
But, Joe, is there any financial upside in all these concerns?
Um, I, I, I mean, I don't wanna be up here saying that, that there are some financial implications that could help us. But, but I think tha- the, the downside is more the risk to us being the, the polar provider has, you know, I really don't see any upside to, to us actually being the polar unless David can think of, of anything, you know. You, you're taking, you're taking all the risk on yourself, you know, and having to spread those large costs between customers that you're not gonna know. They can change from month to month, week to week, you know. You just don't know who's gonna be left that you're gonna have to cover energy for.
Yeah, the on- the only potential upside, you know, historically, our tariff has been the, the PCRF, Power Cost Recovery Factor has been a pass-through. If the governing bodies decided they wanted to build a profit margin into that, I assume that you could. That's something we'd have to look into. But, uh, with it being a competitive market, uh, I presume that, that it would be a permissible for you to add a, a margin in there that we don't currently do on the power supply piece of it. Whether you would wanna do that or not, I, I don't know. But I know the other providers of last resort do have a, you know, they do have a margin in there. They, they get, they get their full recovery plus a margin. So if you wanted to do the same thing, there could potentially be an upside there. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor.
So, um, I had a couple of questions. Number one, uh, you've got a, on this slide, you've got the, uh, uh, franchise fee and pilot deal now. Is, is that not already built into your estimate of the TDU rate?
Uh, actually i- it, it is, but you know, we, we have the, it, it's actually our total, it's a total purchase power cost. I mean, the, how can I say it? So, so the rate of return that we're gonna be, give is building the TDU, the TDU charge as well. But, you know, you, you gotta remember that, that, tha- they'll get on top of that. The, the, the city will get a top, on top of that, a revenue from the franchise fee and pilot. So that's another thing, you know, the way the model's built is we are gonna give the city the same FFE and pilot, but that's anticipating that everybody will have that TDU charge and there will be no polar.
Well, that's why I'm asking. So my understanding was, we're gonna take basically the dollar figure of the FFE and pilot
Yes.
and add that to the TDU rate. So that wouldn't come into the discussion of whether we're the polar or not because everybody's gonna be paying the same rate per kilowatt hour on the, um, TDU charge.
Yeah, tha- that is correct. That, that's actually a, a good point. So y- you may be correct on that. I, I, I was just thinking, you know, further revenues that we would budget for the city because whatever we do on sales, we have to transfer 5% of that to the revenue. So I was talking about, and, you know, if we do become the polar, we still have to give the city a budget on the franchise fee for the, the revenues that we generate. And tha- that's pretty much what I was talking about, you know. That can be really volatile. We tell the city we're gonna make, instead of, you know, we're still gonna give them the 13, 14 million we have, but we'll say there's another additional $2 million coming in, cause we're the polar now. And if it shifts that there's not as many as we expected, it could be $1 million. When in their budget, they already anticipate we're gonna transfer over $2 million.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we're double counting there. If, if we're, if we're trying to, if we're trying to get the same dollar amount as we get now
Yes.
with the franchise fee and pilot, and we build that into the TDU, then that's gonna be there regardless.
Okay. Yeah, you are correct.
Okay.
But you know, in our financial mo- we, we'd still have to budget an extra franchise fee and pilot, you know, because we'll be receiving, we see, we will be receiving revenues if we are the polar. So we have to add an additional amount on that. And so maybe we could tell the city they could just be, you know, have to face it on their 14 million that we're giving TD, yeah.
Well, so let me, let me take up a different subject then. Basically, my initial questioning a couple of months ago, or month or so ago, was about the potential impact on our, um, sort of least sophisticated customers, that is, those who would be most likely to, uh, to stay with the polar or, or just not exercise their right to choose. And, uh, what that might, uh, portend for their, uh, their bills if we no longer have that, um, input as far as, um, energy costs. So, you know, from an overall city perspective, um, you know, do we have any? Is there any information, and this is for everybody, I guess, uh, that would say, okay, in the city of Houston or Dallas or whatever, and maybe we've seen some of this before, the, the polar rate averages X and the retail plans is Y. But I know there's all kinds of retail plans, so you'd, you'd have to, you'd have to be comparing somehow apples and apples. Anyway, I mean, I, uh, y'all know what I'm getting at is we don't want our, we don't want our citizenry to be, um, paying an exorbitantly high rate, um, simply because they haven't exercised their right to choose in comparison to what, in my opinion, they would've paid if we'd, if we stayed there, which, which then leads to the idea that, well, okay, if we can control the rate, if we remain the polar, we control the rate. Number one, that rate has to be approved by PUC, right?
No.
No? Okay.
The, the local governing bodies, uh, retain control on both polar rates and the.
So we can choose whether to, at, to your point, and we can choose whether there's a profit in there or whether we're subsidizing.
I would say yes, with a, with a, with a pretty big caveat, you've gotta be able to negotiate a rate with a polar and, uh.
Well, if, but if we're the polar.
If we're the polar, yeah. They, you know, it's whatever y'all decide you want it to be.
Right.
And I would say that, uh, to, to follow up on your previous question, the, the polar rates that are out there right now are available. They're on the, on the PUC website, so you can see what the rates are. And they're 15, 16 cents a kilowatt hour. So they're pretty high compared to the rates in the market.
And that's one of the charts you had, I can't remember if it's last week, uh, last two weeks ago or the month before.
No, sir. I, I haven't shown you any information on the polers, but it is available information.
Okay, okay. But, but tha- I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll cut you off.
Go ahead. Well, but the range on that chart, if I remember right, went from roughly four cents all the way up to like 18.
I've got that chart replicated for this, for this meeting later on. But, yeah, you're right. It does go up to almost 20 cents a kilowatt hour. But that did not include the ro- the polar rates. That was just rates that were on the, the power to choose website.
Okay.
The polar rates are at the right, right-hand scale in that, in that graph.
Okay, okay.
So in ours, the polar, that rate, Mr. Taylor's talking about, whether you're not a sophisticated borrower, you don't get on the internet and go negotiate and do those type things, your delinquent account, you're someone who's been turned off, turned on, that's 16 cents. That's just a set rate. If we go out to an external firm or whoever that would act as the polar, and they're polar, is there rates for delinquent borrowers? There's people who, uh, within that little, or is the polar our polar is, that's the rate no matter what if you're on the polar?
Yes, polar, the polar rate is, is fixed per, per the PUC's, uh, the way the PUC does it, it's fixed. And Jen, Ms. Smith's gonna talk about that a little more here in a minute. But, uh, it's fixed by the PUC process, which, you know, the, the governing bodies here could, could elect to go through a different process. So the rates might not be identical.
Okay, so maybe, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, maybe, uh, so if we elect to be the polar, our rate doesn't have to be approved by the PC.
That's, that's right.
But if anybody else is the polar, there's, still does not, okay.
Governing body has control over that, but you've gotta be able to negotiate with somebody that, that's willing to do it for an agreed upon rate.
Right, okay.
That's all I had. If there's any other questions.
I'm gonna step away from this now. All right. Thank you, Joe. Any other questions, Joe? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna, as Mr. McCullough talked about, I'm gonna run through the PUC procedures on, um, the provider of last resort, as it's been referred to as polar throughout this discussion. Um, I'll start with the basics. Um, under Texas Utilities Code, Chapter 40, it outlines kind of the governing bodies' kind of rights and responsibilities as it relates to the provider of last resort, um, should the, this, should the governing bodies decide to opt in to retail competition. And there's really three main points to take from this. Um, one, upon the initiation of, of customer choice, the governing body shall designate itself or another entity as the provider of last resort. So number one, the governing bodies shall designate someone else or itself, um, as the provider of last resort. Two, the governing body may establish procedures and criteria for designating the polar. Um, this, this body as well as city council have the flexibility to decide what criteria, what process, how to designate, all of those types of things. And the third one is that the governing body may redesignate according to a schedule it deems appropriate. Um, so as the third point, you know, the, the designation schedule can be as both this body and city council may choose to do. What I'm gonna walk through today is, um, at a, I'll say this at a very high level. I will say rule, rule 25.43 is what governs the PUC selection of polers generally. Um, it is a very, very dense rule. There's a lot to it. So I tried to pull out the things that I thought this body might be most interested in and based on some of the questions that have been asked, um, to try to walk through it. Um, as Mr. McCullough has mentioned, uh, as you saw before from Utilities Code, Chapter 40, this body and the city council have the discretion on this issue. So everything I'm about to tell you does not apply to you. Um, but it's, as Mr. McCullough said, it's the model that we have to look at. Um, so I'm gonna kind of walk through to, to the extent I can, uh, how the PUC process works in selecting providers of last resort. The, the Public Utility Commission divides the pri- provider of last resort service into four customer types. So when it goes through this process, it, it has four customer types that it has in mind, and those are defined in the rule. One residential, two small, non-residential, three medium, non-residential, and four, large, non-residential. Um, and so then the, the Public Utility Commission then may designate a provider to serve any or all of the four customer classes for the various service areas throughout the state. The provider of last resort is required to offer a basic standard retail service package to customers that it is designated to serve. That includes basic firm service and call center facilities. Basic firm service is that service that's not subject to interruption for economic reasons. Um, so that does not, it does not include value-added options offered in the competitive market. Generally, um, billing by providers of last resort will require a notice to the customer that is being billed that there is a competitive market available and competitive products available. Um, the provider usually musting also include, uh, information on the power to choose website as well as a prescribed notice from the Public Utility Commission that talks about the competitive market and that there are competitive options available to the customer. Providers of last resort under the PUC rules must generally abide by the PUC's. Providers of last resort, under the PUC rules, must generally abide by the PUC's Customer Protection Rules, which are subchapter R of the PUC substantive rules. And the Public Utility Commission rules do provide for standard terms of service for each class of customers. I've included in here a hyperlink to the sample for residential customers, and I'll go ahead, I've printed off some copies, I can provide that to you, so you can just have an, I, there's, there's four of them, but you can at least have a sense of what that looks like. And that's publicly available, it's in the text of the rules at that link provided in the PowerPoint. And then providers of last resort serve, selected by the Public Utility Commission, serve two-year terms. So what is the process that the PUC goes through? And this is all very specifically outlined in the rule. Each even-numbered year, the commission determines the eligibility of certificated retail electric providers to serve as providers of last resort, that will commence in the, in January of the following year. So because of the Public Utility Commission's jurisdiction in their process, they require all retail electric providers in the market to submit specific information to the commission by July tenth of each even-numbered year. And then the Public Utility Commission states that it designates the eligible reps, retail electric providers, with the greatest market share based on retail sales in megawatt hours by customer class and polar area, as large service providers. Large service providers, LSPs, are what you'll hear the term referred to as those that are designated as, designated by the Public Utility Commission as the provider of last resort. Then the LSP, large service provider, who is serving as the provider of last resort, with the greatest market share, will list their rate for each customer class in each provider of last resort service area. To see how this works, I can encourage you all to go to the PUC's interchange. It's very user-friendly. Project number five-zero-five-zero-zero contains the filings from 2020 for the selection of providers of last resort for the 2021, 2022 term. And so that's kind of a helpful process to go and be able to look and see what this looks like at the PUC and what they do. The next few slides, I'm just giving you an idea, this is the form. So under the rules, what the PUC, the PUC's criteria for providers of last resort, they were allowed to create a form, basically, to make this a little more uniform in its process, and this is, this is the text of the form from the 2020 docket, that the retail electric providers were required to file with the PUC. Lot of market share questions, a lot of service area questions, and then questions on whether or not they meet the financial standards outlined in the rule, whether they've been, their, their certificate has been revoked or suspended, questions like that. So all the REPs, retail electric providers, are required to fill these out and submit them to the PUC. And then the PUC makes its determinations. And the way the PUC goes through this process is really a two-step process under the rule. First, they have to publish the list of eligible providers to, to serve as the provider of last resort. There may be some retail electric providers, as they're required to submit this information, they may not be eligible to serve as a provider of last resort under the rules. You can see there's qualified, not qualified, on the page in front of you. So the first step is to provide the list of who is eligible to serve for what class of customers and what areas. And then the second step is to actually designate the large service provider, the LSP, that will serve as the provider of last resort. And that is done with those that have the greatest market share based upon retail sales in megawatt hours, and that designation has to occur by October fifteenth of that even-numbered year. And then the LSPs that are designated, they will have to file their rates so that the PUC can publish them on their website by January first of each year. Those rates can be updated when the non-bypassable charges have to be changed. The provider of last resort rates are set out in Rule twenty-five point four-three M. I'm the lawyer and not the mathematician, there's a bunch of formulas in that rule of, as to how these, these rates are derived. You can see a sample of that formula on the document you have in front of you that I passed out. It's got the sample formula for the residential rates, for example, at the top. The Public Utility Commission process also has instances where it can terminate provider of last resort status. Twenty-five point four-three Q provides those circumstances where the commission may revoke the status. And that is if the provider of last resort fails to maintain REP certification for its retail electric provider. If the, if the entity fails to provide service in a manner consistent with the rule, the provider of last resort fails to maintain appropriate financial qualifications, which are outlined in Rule twenty-five point one-oh-seven F, and for other good cause. And then there are ongoing, under the, the PUC process, there are ongoing requirements for providers of last resort in the state. They require specific information to be filed with the commission quarterly. A lot of that information relates to deposits, disconnection information, and deferred payment plan information. The provider of last resort, among others, must also notice customers who are moved to the provider of last resort. This includes some of that notice we talked about earlier, as far as a competitive market being available and competitive products being available. And then the provider of last resort must also comply with applicable customer protection rules prior to the disconnection of its customers. And that's what I have for you at a ten-thousand-foot level of the PUC process, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Ms. Taber?
One question, if you are disconnected, let's say you chose XYZ company, and you were disconnected for failure to pay, do you revert to the polar?
I believe that's how it works.
Don't know, so.
Ms. Shaw might be able to answer that question better, but, but what happens is you're, you're put on what's called switch hold until such time as you make payment. I don't think you automatically, you know, because you failed to pay your bill to one retail electric provider, you don't automatically go to somebody else and.
But I'm saying, let's say you didn't for several months.
Yep.
And they go through the process of disconnecting you.
They could, most likely, the rep would put a switch hold on that EZID. They would not be able to change to any other provider, even a polar.
Okay.
They would stay without power until they satisfied that debt or made arrangements.
Okay, and if they never did, what happens?
Typically, they, the service gets terminated.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boebel, good?
Thanks, Shani.
I'm going to call an audible here, if you're okay.
Yep.
If I can get this, if I can get internet here. I wanted to show you the polar rates, because I think it's instructive. So there's a list of all the, the polar companies right now by service territory. You've got the five wires companies right now. And you can see the polars that are listed for each one of those classifications that Ms. Smith told you about. So let me just, and you can see that it's primarily TXU Energy Retail and Reliant Energy Retail. I think there was one, I thought Calpine was in here somewhere, but I don't see them. Oh, there they are, right there. Calpine's out on the large non-residential for, for Center Point Service Territory. Let me just pull one up, so you can kind of see what their rates look like. So that's TXU Energy Residential Polar Service in the, in the Encore Electric Delivery Service Territory. So you can see fifteen point nine for five hundred, fifteen point five for thousand, fifteen point four for two thousand. But then there's these price adders too, depending on the RT SPP, which is the real-time settlement point price. So if, if the market prices go up, they have the ability to add, add to their charges, so you can see for the different average prices, retail settlement point prices, it can go seventeen cents up to twenty-three cents, depending on if you have a period of very high prices in the market, that can go up. And then, you see all the terms and conditions down here below, I won't try to read all that, but.
Still cheaper than Joe's, though.
Now, this is, this is, this is the total all-in cost that includes the wires charges.
That's, that was my question, that includes the TDU.
Right, right, yeah.
So anyway, I thought you might want to see that while we're talking about polar. And that's on the PUC website, it's pretty easy to find there. Mr. Rose?
All right, going to talk about communication. We've talked about it just kind of generally in our last couple of meetings, but thought it'd be important to actually kind of show you the process, you know, that we would go through. I'll, I'll say this upfront, that part of the challenge of this communication process is that there, you know, if we continue to move forward with this, if there's a vote of approval, that there are going to be several key steps along the way that are almost going to serve as many campaigns. You know, one thing you learn is that if you try to take a communications campaign and spread it, you know, over two years with intensity, people wane, they stop kind of listening. But also with this project, you know, at certain points in time, you don't want to overload people with information and make them feel as though they need to do something immediately when they don't necessarily need to. So for example, we've been doing a lot of media interviews about this process. I think we've done at least four different news stories on all the different networks over the past month, which is important. But if we launched a full campaign on what competition was, you know, this week, you would have a lot of people confused, thinking, did I miss the vote? Do I need to go do something? So there's kind of a staged-in process that you need to conduct, so that everybody knows what they need to know, when they need to know it, so they can act responsibly on it. So in a general sense, you're going to have five different areas that you're going to want to hit on any communications plan. First one, you want to utilize your own resources. So our website and our social channels are important to get information out to people's social channels, to get them important small bits of information, but to drive them back to the website always, so that they can read as much as they, as they want to on our own website that we control. We do have an email, an email list of folks that sign up voluntarily. It's not that extensive of a list, but we always utilize it in campaigns. Direct mailers are something that can be impactful. We did that on the ERCOT cutover, on the migration last Memorial Day, telling them where they could go to see if they're affected or not. So at various points throughout this, we would utilize direct mailers. But you also want to utilize City Lubbock Utility Website, Social Channels, Account Portal, and IVR System. Those are important for kind of minute-by-minute updates when something big, like the migration, we used the account portal and the IVR system to tell them that, you know, you may be out of power, here's where you need to go. And then billing on certs are always a relatively free way to reach every single customer, because every single customer, by and large, is going to get a bill. Even if they get an online bill, when they log on, they can still see those on certs on their bill. Earn Media, that's going to be, you know, through press releases and advisories, that's going to be setting up with KCBD, KOBK, KMAC, Fox, the HA, and others. So we would obviously, as I said, we've done some this month, we do a lot of interviews. You know, fact sheets and one-pagers are things that you can utilize when giving these interviews. The last thing on this page is paid media. Obviously, that, that, that takes resources, it takes ad buys, and so we want to make sure that those are done strategically, so that we're not spending any more, any more money than necessary. But again, just trying to make sure that we get everybody, get everybody's attention as we go through this process. One, one important thing that we always utilize are speaking opportunities. You know, what we're doing here today with, with this committee, the regular EEB meetings, the council meetings, we want to continually give these presentations, so that people who tune in can, can know what's going on. But city council, district meetings are important. We utilize these a lot in the summer times. Any council members that are holding district meetings, we always try to attend when big things are going on, so that I can tell folks what we're doing, but also field a bunch of questions that I wouldn't otherwise get. A lot of people will go to a council, district meeting that may not come to one of our events. So again, you're reaching more people than you would otherwise. We always speak at, at, you know, community organizations like Chamber of Commerce, LEED, Rotary, and these. They've always been really good, Kiwanis Club, they've always been really good partners of ours. And then various religious organizations, whether it be kind of directly to that religious organization, or any committees, subcommittees, or, or just various groups. I always bring it up, but Mr. Fields, obviously, I went and spoke to your group before the migration. Groups like that, again, are a different audience that you may not catch otherwise, that have a large audience at home that they can carry your message to. So as we would do things like fact sheets and one-pagers, or if we built a retail choice guide, say, that's an all-encompassing book to show people how they choose and what they need to be aware of or wary of, these would definitely be materials that you would pass out to community groups or religious organizations to take back to their members, so that they can, they can have that information at their disposal. Open houses are something that we don't do all of the time, but we do for big projects like this. Again, another way to invite the public in to hear your message, but also give them an opportunity to tell you what their concerns are, so that you can rope it into the larger picture, make sure you're accounting for everything. You're always going to get some things that you had not thought of when you do an open house. So I mentioned the open house last, because it leads into something that we're going to try to quickly put together for the week of January tenth. The idea is trying to put together an open house that we would have here at City Hall that allows people to come. We would do a thirty-minute presentation up front in here, so that we can give them the presentation that we've given to you all, over, you know, a couple of months, to kick off the conversation. But then try to have, we always try to take it from there to kind of a decentralized, so people can wander around and go to different sections, or ask questions to people one-on-one. And right now, just, you know, generally what we would be looking at in terms of different stations that we could put together would be, you know, billing and customer service, a power-to-choose computer station, so you could show them what the website would look like, a section on rates, David gave a bunch of information about rates, you know, you can have, try to put together some compare and contrast on that, you know, have, have an area where they can just ask general questions of leadership. But these things work best when you also accompany each one of these stations with a large notepad and have somebody dedicated, not necessarily catching every specific question, but looking for themes or repeated questions. And then you would have a questionnaire that you give to everybody, that they could take home and send back to you, or they could drop in a box right there. But if you do that, you pretty much catch everybody, hopefully, in this type of an event. Using this as an example of how we'd put together a communications plan for these different open houses or events, you'd do a press release, the week, you know, the week before, the week of, and typically the day of. I would give news interviews with the major outlets, I'd go on all radio shows that I normally go on, telling people to come out to the open house on, say, January thirteenth. We would, we, I've already gotten an ad buy quote, which we would have to okay this week, which we plan on doing. And it includes print media, HA, Elititor, Southwest WDC, Southwest Digest, Latino Lubbock, are the main print ones we go with. Radio, y'all probably won't recognize all those different call signs, but radio, we try to advertise on all the major stations. And then I think what, I think the most impactful area of paid media these days are the digital ads. So with our purchasing ads, you know, if you go on everything Lubbock, there's a banner up top that says, you know, Lubbock looking, you know, Lubbock currently looking to transition to competition, click here to learn more. click here to learn more, and it takes you right to your webpage. And so this has a lot of reach and typically is the most useful, uh, part of the paid media campaign is that you're going to catch somebody, uh, cruising these websites, and hopefully they go to your website and learn more. So, uh, again, that's just an example of, of one area. We would want to do this each step of the way, you know, follow this same process. Uh, but key takeaway is that, uh, you're trying to reach as many customers as you possibly can in the most effective way. Uh, and you want to manage the expectations for the timeline. Again, what we're trying to communicate right here in this moment is that you all are simply deliberating this big topic with a decision to come. As we kind of harden the, the vote date, you'll want to do a lot of, especially earned media on that to say, you know, hey, they're looking at, at, at making a decision on this council and EUB, you should pay attention to this. Um, but then you also want to stop short so that they don't think that, again, they need to go out to the website and make a choice. You don't want a bunch of inviting a bunch of cold calls when it's not necessary from possible retail electric providers. You want to use as much of a diverse mix of media and communication as you can. You want to repeat the message over and over again. Uh, but as I said in the Memorial Day cut over, and I'll say again today, you're not going to reach every single last customer out there. There are going to be folks that you've missed. So along the way, you need to account for that because you can tell people that this really important date is coming, some might not tune until the day after. So it's just, it's a continuous process to try to blanket the airwaves, do as much as you possibly can. And, you know, I, I think when we did this over Memorial Day, it worked in, in terms of catching the vast majority of people. We amped up the importance of it the week of. We'll do a similar thing in, in, in front of every single major event. But that kind of gives you an overview of how we put this together and what it looks like. But for you all receiving questions, I know anywhere you go as this gets, I know you're already getting them, but as we talk more about it, grocery store or other places, you're going to get questions. You can always direct them back to our website. Tell them, go to the homepage and you'll see, uh, right on the homepage, you'll see, uh, you know, where you can go to learn more about transition into competition. But the most important thing you can tell them right now is that, you know, feel free to tell me whatever you want to tell me about your opinion of this, but you don't need to do anything right now. There's nothing that's required of you as a customer at this point in time, and the utility will communicate with you as we get closer to tell you exactly what you need to be doing. But I know y'all are going to get questions when people see a random KCBD story and say, I saw that thing on the news last night, so what do I do right now? Nothing required as of right now, except just tune in, and we'll have various points where they can come and, and make their voices heard. And we'll try to communicate to you all every time we, you know, get close to these events that you can direct people to for more questions. But the first one would be that week of January tenth for the open house. So that's kind of a overview. I can dive into any one of these areas if y'all want, uh, answer any other questions if I can.
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so there's the chart that I promised you. It's, it's an update from the one I showed previously. Uh, rates on the low end of the scale have come down a little bit, actually, recently since the last time I did this. So as gas prices start coming back to us, the rates get a little bit cheaper, so that's a good thing. Still about, uh, same number of retail electric. Well, I guess there's more retail electric providers and more plans available than, than the last time I showed this to you, so some improvement there. Navigating the Power to Choose website, I'm going to spend some time on this. First of all, uh, when you're looking for the Power to Choose website, make sure you select the right URL because there are some sites out there that mimic Power to Choose. And, uh, they're actually marketing sites for some of the retail electric providers, so you want to be sure and use the right URL. And, uh, that'll get you to the PUC, uh, website. So there's a, a number of different criteria that you can, you can select to refine the plan options, contract length, pricing and billing, uh, plan type, prepaid plans, uh, time of use, company rating, renewable energy percentages, and then electric companies. So I'm going to walk through some of those as we go, go forward here. So when you first go into the Power to Choose website, this is, this is the screen that you see. Uh, so on this, on this screen, you can see I've got the zip code seven-nine-seven-oh-six, that's a Midland, Midland zip code. It automatically populates the TDU area, which is Encore Service Territory. And then you can put an estimated usage in there if you want to, but you don't have to. And then you can see it lists, right now it's listing, uh, sorting by price per kilowatt hour, so you've got the lowest prices on the top, and then, you know, there's two-hundred-and-six altogether that, that you can look at here. Okay, so, uh, that's kind of the first screen that you will see. Uh, here's the options that I mentioned earlier. You, you've got select buttons here for, uh, contract length. Uh, you can show all plans or plans without a minimum usage fee credit, and I'll talk about that some more here in a minute. You can do fixed type, variable. There actually are no more indexed plans. After February, they, uh, eliminated the index plan, so those are not available anymore for residential customers. You can, uh, you can select all plans or do not show prepaid plans, uh, time of use plans, and then company rating is another feature, and also renewable energy, and you can select specific electric companies if you want to do that. So starting at the top here, you've got, this is everything basically. This is all the plans with no restrictions on here. One of, one of the things that you will notice is that, uh, the, the rate for a thousand kilowatt hours is pretty cheap, seven-point-six cents per kilowatt hour. But you will notice that if you only use five-hundred kilowatt hours, you've got seventeen-and-a-half cents kilowatt hour. So, and then if you go over a thou, use two-thousand kilowatt hours, the rate goes back up. So what, what certain companies do is they put credits in there. So when you hit a thousand kilowatt hours of usage, you get a credit, and that drops your average costs. And so it's kind of a, it's kind of a gimmick. It's a gimmicky deal. So unless you use exactly a thousand kilowatt hours every, every month, you're probably not going to come out ahead on that, on that type of plan. Sorry, I jumped screens there. So, so one of the things we might want to do is eliminate those quirky, quirky plans, select plans without a minimum usage fee and credit. And so that's what I've done on this screen. So you can see now the lowest cost rate is nine-point-two cents kilowatt hour for a thousand kilowatt hours. And you can see there, the, the five-hundred kilowatt hour and the two-thousand kilowatt hour are a lot more, you know, a lot more consistent with the thousand kilowatt hour rate because you eliminated those credit plans. Uh, but we've dropped down to hundred-and-eighty-seven plans here now, so you've, you've eliminated some of those quirky plans. Got a fewer number of plans on the list here. But one of the things you'll notice here is there's still some variable rate plans in here, so, you know, those, those are still a little scary, not, not necessarily something you'd want. So one, one option you might want to do is eliminate those variable rate plans and just select the fixed rate plan. So that's what I've done on this next screen. Selected fixed rate only plans, and you can see the green highlights there. So all of these are fixed rate plans. You've still got some, you know, nine-point-two cents kilowatt hour rates in here. And, uh, but, but now, one thing you'll notice is the term on these plans is three months, four months, five months. You, you're only getting the, a few of the shoulder months here with, with this plan. You're not getting a full summer, which is when costs are typically higher in the market. So you might want to change that to, uh, include a longer term. So that's what I've done on this next set of slides here is I've said, well, I want a twelve-month term. So you select that twelve month to twelve-month term. You see the green highlights there. All of these are twelve-month term plans. Still got a ten-point-two cent rate there. Or actually, it's gone up to ten-point-two. Well, it's nine-point-two, right? So now it's ten-point-two, so that adds a little bit to the rate when you go through a full summer. And now you'll see you've only got fifty-two plans shown here. So every time you tighten, tighten your selection criteria, you, you eliminate some plans and kind of focus in on other, other ones.
David?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know if you've got it in the next slide somewhere, but what's, are you going to talk about this company rating?
I am. It's the next slide, actually.
Okay.
So, yeah, and that's, I've got that highlighted because, well, you say, okay, the rate, the, the cheapest rate on this plan is ten-point-two cents. That might not be too bad, but I'm a little worried about company rating here. I've got two stars and one stars and three stars. You know, should I be worried about those companies? Because they, and what this company rating does is it lists, the, the PUC tracks complaints that they receive on the individual retail electric providers, and that's how they come up with these ratings. But let's say we want to use only four-star and five-star companies. That's what I've done on this next plan. You've got four-star and five-star plans or companies. You can see, again, the, the rate goes up a little bit. Every time you, you tighten the criteria, your rate goes up a little bit. But now, and now you're down to fourteen plans altogether when you've done that. So you've jumped from ten-point-two cents to ten-point-eight cents. You say, man, maybe that, maybe that one-star company's not too bad, or that two-star company's not too bad for, for that much difference. Let's, let's look at their rating history, which you can do. And so that's what this slide shows is for that, for that two-star rated company Frontier Utilities. You can see the complaint history. They're going back six months. And you can see that, uh, their complaint history has actually improved over the last few months. So maybe they've gotten their act together. They're getting fewer complaints. Most of the complaints were billing-related, uh, discontinuance of service. You know, we get, we get, we get quite a few complaints in that category as well. So maybe it's, maybe it's not too bad to do. You might want to, you might want to risk it and give them a try anyway, but that would be up to the customer to decide whether you wanted to do that or not. So this chart is the same chart we looked at before, but now, so if you select those four-star and five-star companies, you're going to be in the yellow highlighted area of the rate curve. If you decide to take a chance on the, the two-star rating company, you'd be down here in the, you know, ten-cent range, ten-point, ten-point-two cents, I think, was the five-hundred, or, uh, ten-point-eight and ten-point-two for a thousand kilowatt hours. So that's the kind of judgment you have to use as a customer, and you decide whether you want to, uh, go with a higher-rated company and save a little bit of money, or stick with a higher-rated company and pay a little more. So that's kind of, that's kind of it for the Power to Choose. Uh, I, I did want to go through some recommendations for selecting a retail electric provider, and this, this excerpt is from a Dallas Morning News article, uh, that was written by Dave Lieber. He's the watchdog. I don't know if you ever seen the Dallas Morning News, but he writes all these watchdog articles. And so this one came in February of 2021, earlier this year, right after the winter storm. And so his, uh, his recommendations were to choose fixed-price plans, avoid the variable rate plans, first and foremost. Those, some, some of the folks that were on those index plans and variable rate plans got hurt really bad in February. And then avoid the minimum usage fee credit plans. That was those quirky plans, gimmicky plans that I talked about. And then also auto, avoid auto-pay plans, uh, and prepaid plans, I think is, uh, another one that you, you might want to avoid. Read the fax label in terms of service. Make sure you understand all the add-on fees, cancellation fees, and other terms. And then the, one of the, another company out there that has some recommendations called Energy Choice Experts. Again, choose fixed, fixed rate plan and twelve-month term plans so that you get a full season, you know, winter, fall, spring, and summer. Get a full twelve months in, in your rate so that you're not just getting the cheap shoulder months. Switch plans every year to obtain the new customer discount because, uh, I don't know if you noticed on that Power to Choose screens that I was showing earlier, but there's new customer discounts. Those go away after your term, your original contract ends, so you want to switch to make sure you're getting the new customer discounts. Those prepa, prepayment plan rates are usually higher than other plans, so avoid the prepay plans. And then avoid time of use and free night and weekend offers. You see those on TV a lot of times on the sporting events. You'll see the free nights and weekend plans advertised, unless you actively manage your daily usage of electricity, which very, very few of us do that, at least not to, to that extent. So while some hours are low and are free, the high rates at other hours more than offset the, the, the free hours. So unless you're really actively managing your usage, avoid those plans. Now, there are some electric, electricity management companies out there, and I've, I've, I've been watching for these. And, uh, there's actually another Dallas Morning News article that listed all these companies out, and there's some really good ones in here. So, so if you, if you're a customer, you don't want to fool with having to shop every twelve months or however frequently you want to do that. You don't really want to waste the time on doing it. These companies take your usage and they find the optimum plan for you and make a recommendation. Some of them actually even actively do all of that for you. They, they select the re, do all the paperwork for you. And, uh, they charge a little more for that ser, level of service, but they keep you in the right plan, the optimal plan, plan all the time. So if somebody that just really doesn't want to fool with it can pay a little bit of money and get a, get an optimum rate. So, uh, the ones that you may have heard of are Energy Ogre. I know they've, they've received quite a bit of publicity, and this Energy Choice Experts is one that I really like. They charge thirty-five dollars a year to, uh, to find the optimum, uh, plan for you. And they, they actually retrieve your usage information from the, from the website. I mean, from the ERCOT website because, you know, all this information we're going to send in via the communications that, communications link that we've got with ERCOT, that's all stored there, and it's available for companies to retrieve. So all your history will be there. You have to give them permission to be able to receive it because it's, it's, uh, controlled. It's, you have control of that information, but if you give them permission to download it, then they can pull your history and find the plan that, you know, run some analytics that figure out which plan works best for you over a full twelve months' history. So that's kind of it for selecting retail electric provider, but I thought I'd talk about the regulatory process a little bit. Our engineering consultant has completed their initial round of studies. Uh, we've, uh, had a couple of calls with ERCOT, shared those studies with ERCOT. In the second meeting that we had, ERCOT wanted to see a, because we did a 2023-year study, which is year we'll be joining. ERCOT said, well, if, if your load grows between 23 and 23 and 2025, that may trigger the need for some transmission lines that you didn't see in 2023. So they've asked us to run a 2025, uh, year study. And we're, we're working on that. Our consultant is working on that, and they hope to have that completed by the end of, uh, January 2022. ERCOT Legal was involved in this second call as well, and so they're going to send a letter to Public Utility Commission in that tracking docket that we've had going back, way back a couple of years. And they're going to talk about their plan to perform an independent study, what, what they're going to do, and just make sure the commission knows what, what their plan is, in case they want to comment on it. We, we may need to file a letter in that docket as well. Just, um, we'll, uh, decide that in, in the coming weeks. But we will also be in contact with, uh, ERCOT top executives. That's on my list of things to do to urge timely effort from the ERCOT planners so we can keep this, keep this thing moving, because we've got to get the ERCOT studies complete before we can file the application with Public Utility Commission to receive permission to move the remaining load over. And that's, that's, that process will take some time, we know. We're hoping it won't take two years like the first, first transfer study took, and we, we don't think it should. But we still don't see the need for any major transmission projects even in 2025, but we've got to have the studies to prove that. So proposed schedule. Here's, here's what we've come up with, and y'all, y'all, you know, obviously, y'all control the schedule more, more than we do. But, uh, there is a city council meeting coming up on January eleventh. We, uh, plan to present this same presentation, subject to any adjustments that Mr. Atkinson wants to make in the presentation. We'll provide the same presentation at the city council workshop. As Matt mentioned, the week of January twelfth, we, uh, will plan on having an open house for citizens to hear about our plans. And then on January eighteenth, the, the EUB meeting in January, we, we could have that teed up for a vote, if the board is ready for that by that time on the, on the opt-in resolution. Y'all have already seen a draft of the resolution. It's got the, uh, conditions under which we would, would join the retail market. That's assuming, and, and we would also bring the, uh, contracts for implementation of the, of the technology and the services, uh, though we should be able to get those wrapped up by January eighteenth, assuming that we're, that, uh, decision is that we, LPNL will not be the polar. If we're, if, if you want LPNL to be the polar, then we've got some more work to do to get the contracts ready, ready for approval. If we're, if, if you want LPNL to be the polar, then we've got some more work to do to get the contracts ready, ready for approval. And then January twenty-fifth, the second council meeting of January, they, we could have the opt-in resolution posted for council vote. So potentially we could have the governing bodies act on retail choice by the end of January. That's about the fastest we can move, but obviously the schedule is, is, is under your control.
Questions? Ms. Stafford?
Does the market design have any that the PUC is working on or considering? Does it impact any of these dates or any of the regulatory process?
It should, it should not. It's a good question. We've, of course, been following the market design rule makings at, at commission very closely. We filed comments and a couple of Ks, and I've actually testified at one of their hearings. It appears that they've, they've adopted all the short-term stuff that they're, that they intend to adopt. And none of that will impact what we're doing now, shouldn't, should not impact the retail market at all. I mean, that's already kind of priced into the wholesale retail markets at this point in time. The longer term things that they're looking at, we still have some concerns about some of the longer term stuff, but it's going to be another couple of months before they get any traction on any of that. And then probably a three or four year deployment, even if they decide to do some of that more worrisome stuff like the LSE obligation matter that we, that we've commented on several times. But so nothing short-term on the horizon that we can see. Some of the longer terms, term stuff is still a little worrisome.
Ms. Taylor?
Mr. McCullough, couple of observations. So I really appreciate the estimate, the initial TDU estimate. I think that's very helpful information that we were sort of shooting around about. Is it, given, you know, our, our contractual obligations, our reduced T cost revenue and our obligation on the exit fee for XL. Is it fair to say that our TDU rate would be lower if we adopted that, say, in twenty twenty-five or twenty, whenever we get to the end of that train? Would our TDU rate be lower then than, than it is under this current estimate?
I have to defer to Mr. Jimenez. I don't, I'm not sure what all went into the numbers. If it's, if it's the current model, then the model has the exit fee or the entry fee, the twenty-two million dollars a year is built into that model. So once that twenty-two million goes away, our, our costs will go down, or revenues will increase, external revenues will increase, which would, should seem to give you flexibility to lower your rate.
Right.
Mr. Taylor, you're absolutely right. So, so that, that, that rate that I gave you is fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And so that includes the SPS whole harmless payment, the ERCOT, I mean, the ERCOT whole harmless payment. So all those, you know, as, as we push those out, if we don't, then that TD rate does go. So that incorporates everything in our five-year model right now. So you think after twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you know, when those, those charges fall off, so will the TD rate?
Okay.
That is correct.
Do we know about what that number would be? Can we?
No, I didn't, I didn't go that far out, but I can definitely get you that number once, once those charges fall off. But it will reduce the, the cost per KW H O.
Okay. My second observation or question is, so Mr. McCullough, based on what, what you pulled up from the, uh, the polar for Encore, I think it was small residential, was like fifteen and a half cents roughly. And then what we were looking at on the slides for a thousand kilowatt hours fixed rate was, let's say, ten, ten and a half cents roughly. So there's, there's about a five cent per kilowatt hour difference.
Yeah, so the polar, I'm looking at, looking at the graph, the polar should be out here somewhere.
Yeah, right. Right. And go ahead, you were going to say?
I was just going to respond to your, your question to.
Oh, good, yes.
It's about point eight cents per kilowatt hour would be, if, if just taking the twenty-two million dollars additional revenue. And if you applied all that to your rate, it'd be, you know, twenty-two million divided by two point seven million, or two point seven billion kilowatt hours a year, which is what we sell, then it's about point.
Yeah.
Point eight cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
So it's almost a, almost a full cent per kilowatt hour reduction.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's substantial if you look at the, as a percentage of the, of the overall total.
Yeah, it'd be, you know, a cent per kilowatt hour, based on ten cent rates, just for talking purposes, would be a ten percent.
Yeah.
Increase.
Now, I forgot where we were going. Oh, so the five cent difference between the, uh, the polar rate and the average that we pulled up on your example. Is it fair to say that's what a citizen of Lubbock will probably wind up paying? Is our, for not choosing? For, for in effect, sitting on their hands and not, not making a choice? And if you compared that to our current rate, which is roughly eleven, eleven cents?
Yeah, if, you know, right now, we're, we're kind of out here somewhere. You know, we've got our, we've got our winter rates a little higher.
Right.
We hope to have the summer rates a little lower.
A little lower.
So if you average them over years, period of time, we're going to be kind of in the middle. Six, six, sixtieth percentile maybe of, of where the things are on the chart right now.
So, so when we go through this education process, it would be very important to try to press upon our citizens the idea that you are definitely going to get a better deal if you choose, if you exercise choice.
I think, I think you're right. And, and so to answer your first question, I think the, the existing polar rates, that's, I don't know how else we can estimate what customers would potentially pay in a, in a, a polar in Lubbock. But I think that's the best proxy we've got for potential polar rates. And, and certainly we would urge every customer not to go on the polar, to choose a retail electric provider. There's plenty of good options out there. There's no reason for them not to take the necessary measures to make sure they're not on the provider of last resort. But, you know, it's, it's challenge communicating with everybody and getting that information across to them. But I think Matt's, Matt's laid out a good plan for doing that. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink.
Right, right. I'm going to switch gears on you now.
Okay.
So part of our reasoning has been all along, we do have large volume ratepayers, customers, who, under our current tariffs, um, the, the rates they're paying now in our current tariffs, they, they could definitely find better rates through a power broker or through some other mechanism going directly. So we've only ever exercised a contractual option with one of our large customers that I'm aware of. Would we be able to mirror those type advantages that our large customers can find in the retail opt-in? Could we mirror that if we did not opt in with some kind of contractual arrangement with some of those people? And if that's a competitive matter, Jenny, stop me.
I would say, one, it may start getting into competitive matters. And two, from my perspective, I, there is, I do still need to do a little bit of homework on that question.
Okay.
I don't know if you have anything others you want to add.
I knew, well, y'all know me.
Let me answer generically, I think safely is the, the, the basis for LPNL's rate structure historically has been cost of service. It's been a cost of service model. And we hire new gen to come in and analyze their cost and allocate them to the different rate classes and try to get, get them fair across the board so that everybody's getting a fair rate, cost of service rate. You can vary from that if you want to. There's no reason, you've got to stick to that cost of service model. But if you give a discount to one rate class, you've got to collect your, your total expenses. So you're going to, you're basically going to have inter-class subsidies of some sort, which we have tried to avoid historically.
No, and I, I think, I think that's, that's the model. And, but that's why I'm asking the question, is if we, if we chose to use a more hybrid type model where we tried to advantage, say, a larger, a larger user to come to Lubbock and, you know, as an economic development tool, so to speak, um, could we do that?
I, I think the answer is yes, subject to legal, legal review. I will just say this, at another utility, we did have some introductory incentive type rates for, for new customers that were moving in, into the community and that had legal research that showed that we could do it. So I, I think it's legal, I think we have the ability to do that sort of thing. We just have, we haven't done it since I've been here, not to my, not to my knowledge anyway.
Well, you know, we're always, we're, we're trying to give the lowest cost of energy to the average home, homeowner, home retail customer. So I think that's, that's a noble goal, is what we ought to be shooting for. So, but, but we could, we could shoot a few different directions if we, if we wanted to.
Yeah, it's just a matter, really, it's a matter of philosophy and, you know, what, what kind of a standard do you want to adhere to going forward? I think you could, you could get off the cost of service model, you could create some incentive rates that would be built into your rate structure if you wanted to do that.
And I guess my last question, well, I mean, not my last, but relates to the, so our, our current, um, our current tariff structure on solar panels allows for basically offset up to the, their point of production.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't allow for purchase of excess production at any, in any sense.
Only intra-month. So for example, if they overproduce one day and use that much energy by the end of the month, then, then it, it is captured. So.
Okay.
But as long as during a given billing period, given billing month, they don't produce more than they use.
Right.
Then we don't get any, we don't, there's no.
They don't get credit.
They don't, well, they get credit intra-month, but they don't, if, if by the end of the month, they still have a credit, they've produced more than they've used, they don't get any.
They don't get, right.
And they don't get to bank it.
Right.
Some utilities do have programs where they allow them to bank them and use them in future months. That's a little risky to do that because power supply costs vary through time. So if you're banking a lot of solar credits in the spring and fall, for example, and then using them in the higher, the higher cost months, you know, you potentially have lost some money there. There's also buyback programs where you just settle up at the end of the month based on what the average price was during the month. And all of those programs are something that we could implement. We have elected not to do that. It's an addition, it would require some additional rate design and some additional programming that we thought was not cost-effective to do for, you know, roughly five hundred customers that we have that have solar, solar units right now, a growing number, very much a growing number. But, and, and particularly because we were looking at retail choice going forward and that's something that the market will address and accommodate the, you know, those customers can select providers that have, give them advantageous rates for solar, solar customers.
So though, so though, and I guess that's my, that's my question, is those folks who have solar panels, after opt-in, they'll be able to choose methods to capitalize, take advantage of their, of their ability to produce power, so to speak.
Yes, they will.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all my questions for now.
Ms. Stafford?
So to follow up what Greg was talking about, if you've got solar panels, you're going to be looking forward to customer choice, is that correct?
I would think they would get, they would be able to achieve some benefits that we don't currently provide them in the retail market.
One question or comment I would have is, on this, it's basically plan, the path, whatever, of the schedule. If it was January, we choose to go retail, we also have to choose whether or not to polar at the same time?
Well, the, if, if we go in January, the assumption is that it will be with, without LPNL being the polar. If we, if you want us to keep the option open for LPNL to be the polar, we need to design the contracts around that option. Because the contracts are going to be much more complicated, complicated with LPNL polar option.
And if we opt in for retail choice, that's irrevocable. Polar, you could always come back and be later on, I guess, if we ever, we could, ten years down the road rewind that and do it. But the other, once we opt into retail choice, you can't come back out of that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a really good point. I think the, the polar option is something that's subject to the governing body approval, the timing, how, how long you, let's say you start out selecting a, a polar to be the third-party provider of last resort. After two years, you decide, well, that was, that didn't work out too well. Let's, let's change and have LPNL become the polar. You certainly have that option as a governing body to do that some future date.
But once you opt into retail, you're in retail.
You're in retail, that, that part is irrevocable. But the polar option is, continues to be a governing body choice.
At any time, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, my, I guess my last observation, I think I may have said this at the last meeting. Initially, when I was asking these questions was, um, you know, we have, we, by maintaining control of the whole system as we are now with the, as a municipal owned utility, that gives a lot of advantages to our ratepayers, potential advantages. Also comes a lot of risk on the, on the power purchase side and all of that, as y'all well know. So, um, when we look at this potential change, my initial thoughts were that, well, maybe we don't like all the things about being the, the, uh, provider of, of electricity to all of the certified area. And maybe there's bad things that can happen to our citizens if we're not in that arena at all in selling energy. So my initial thought was, well, maybe being the polar is the Goldilocks mean, where we're in between those two steps and we can still provide some benefit for our citizens, but, um, but we're not all the way in. And as I've, as I've learned and listened and talked to David and the staff and, and all of our folks over this period of time, come more and more to the conclusion that the polar is, um, not a golden mean, but maybe, maybe a, uh, has, has many of the same risks that we have now and yet, uh, less ability to control our, our ultimate outcome. And it's because we don't know how many people are going to be in that position. So right now, we know what that market is, we know how many kilowatt hours that is. We have to maintain the same ability and it's, we know it's going to be fewer, fewer meters. Now, if we're willing to take that risk, I'm, I'm willing to sign off on that as well. But either way you go, it's going to be probably more cost and, and potential for, uh, let's just say, risk impact events.
Right.
So, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not ready to say today. I, I guess, so my, my gottometer at this point says, well, we should probably just keep what we're doing, keep doing what we're doing. At least we know what we're doing now, um, up until the time that it's necessary to make, to make that shift, which is why I was asking about what the TDU rate would be. And we had this discussion earlier. So, um, yeah, yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's best to do the opt-in at some, at some future date rather than the sooner date. And I understand the reasons why we would, we would prefer to do it sooner. But those are my thoughts at this point. I, I'm not sure that the polar option helps us overall, um, with trying to. I'm not sure that the polar option helps us overall with trying to square what's best for our operations and for the city and for our citizens at this point. So, anyway, not, not completely made up my mind on anything right now.
Any other questions or comments? Anything else from, oh, Ms. Stafford?
Sorry, from this presentation and your last comment, polar can be an option further down the line for us, correct?
Absolutely.
So let's say in two or four or six years, we want to do it. That's within the domain of this municipality.
That is absolutely right.
And right now, if we choose to be the polar, there's $12 million and add-on of six months and more personnel.
Right.
Resources. So those are the three mitigating factors, at least in my opinion. And then in four to six years, we would also have the advantage to see how many people are in polar also. That will have settled out, correct?
Right. Of course, that, that number will change over time. I mean, people come in and out of the polar. And as, what, what typically happens, I know when, when they first launched the retail market way back in the early 2000s, there were a large number of customers that stuck to their historical provider. And it took, you know, two, three, four years and there was, they designed that so that there was headroom, so that the incumbent providers had a cost that was artificially inflated to kind of incentivize people to switch. They didn't switch. Not, much of them did not switch until two or three years down the road after the market was established and word of mouth got out and everything. Then you started seeing some switches, but the polar, the polar feature has survived and, and I can't tell you right now how many people are, Matt, I don't know if we have that number as far as how many people in Texas are on the polar rate. Do we know? I think we can probably find that. I, I don't know off the top of my head how many in the different areas are on the polar rate, but there's a significant number.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Ms. Robyn.
Did, David, it seems that I recall that when this first started being discussed, the average rate of people staying on polar was around 40%. Does that, does that sound right to you?
It does, and that's the number that, that I would, if I was guessing, that's the number I would use right now. We'd have about 40% on polar at day one. And then, you know, hopefully if we, if we do a good job of communicating the importance of selecting a retail electric provider and reach enough folks, maybe we could get that percentage down a little bit, but.
But that is, that is a considerable percentage of our customers.
It is. About 40,000. Yeah, it wouldn't be that many retail customers, I mean, residential customers, probably 20,
All right, well, good presentation. Thank you all and, everyone good? Kind of, sort of good. Well, we're going to go with a meeting adjourned on that kind of sort of. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.